All right, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll call, have word accepted on this here this evening, notation of the meeting. Properly noticed. Okay, recommendation approved now to the March ninth regular board meeting. So, okay, we'll decide to approve the meeting, this March ninth regular board meeting, any comments, changes, corrections? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you.
And he's just.
Resolution approved the bill list. Okay, I have a second. Okay, we've been saying approve the bill list, uh, any discussion? Not all of them in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Oh, Carrie, hey, superintendent's report.
The school board may recall, four or five years ago, you approved a new computer science program. A lot of work, training, planning went into it even before implementation, and now we've been implementing. Started with one course, now we've added a second course, and it's up and running. We have three teachers and some students here to share about our computer science program. So I'll introduce our computer science program, leaders and teachers who are also in the math department. We have Chris Martin, Nick Brangos, and Steve Schmidt. And I'll turn it over to them.
Do I need it like a poll? I don't, I don't think so. So, yeah, this is, this is year four of implementation for the, the two courses, both the semester long CS methods course and the year-long AP computer science A course. And so just a whole brief history there of the whole process, but it kind of started back in 2015. Where we folks and Roll Jack were starting to getting to talking during one of our PCT times, which are some of the periods after school on Wednesday when the kids are off early. Where we're all doing some professional meetings and they were kind of looking at the fact that we didn't have any computer science courses anymore. They had kind of gone away somewhere in between the time that the Pringles and I were students here and back as teachers. And they pulled myself and Schmidt in, and pretty quickly we started getting into looking at what some local high schools had as far as curriculum. Being able to look at how we were going to get ourselves accredited because amongst the three of us, we had, I think, four courses of computer science during our undergraduate works. So, under, underprepared is probably not quite the word for it at that point, but without having to try to go back and do like student teaching again, it was going to be a little bit of an issue. So, uh, we, we got aligned with Brian Osterberg, who's a, a computer science teacher at Brookfield. And through him, we were able to get all the information what we needed to. Essentially, the way that the accreditation process is at this point, you pretty much have to be able to pass a computer science exam to, to get the license if you pull the license in one of, or. In branch, science, English, cultural studies, is how that worked out. Uh, and so we went to, you know, a summer program through Marquette. They took us through kind of their CS program, which is a exploring computer science class. We implemented some of that stuff in our classes and haven't taken the entire course. We worked for two full years with, with Brian Osterberg, getting caught up to date on what we needed to know. And those were long nights after work through, uh, you know, Zoom before Zoom was a thing for the rest of us, kind of world here. And so at that point, the school board approved the two courses that we thought made sense, which was fall of 2017. We got the licenses taken care of in the spring of 2018. And then went to a, an institute or a summer program at Carleton College in Minnesota right before implementing the courses. So that was the summer of 2018 and then the fall of 2018 was the first group through both courses. We put together kind of a brochure to try to show students what we have and what courses are available to them. Since, uh, we're in the math department, you know, you don't, you don't have to ask, hey, come take math. Everybody takes math. Computer science is an elective, so we found out real quick, hey, you know what? You actually do have to pander to the, uh, the, the student body here on this. And so, um, getting, getting it up to the point where we want it to be is kind of what, what we're still looking at here in year four. We did get through Brian Osterberg, uh, the ability to kind of get some of his connections through Marquette University. And our students that have taken the computer science AP class now have the opportunity to take a course after that, which we cannot teach ourselves, has to be taught by a professor or college credit beyond the AP class. Uh, and so this year was the second year that we've had students do that. Marquette's got a section where students from Brookfield, New Berlin, Baraboo, and us are included in there. So we're.
Chris, that's the data structures class or?
That's the data structures class, yep. So, sorry if that wasn't so brief. The slide, the slide is right. Something was raised. So just quick importance of computer science, it covers a lot more than coding. You know, there's software development, there's IT, there's all sorts of things. Our classes do, at least the AP class, it's a lot of coding. Pringles can speak to it maybe a little more with this course, but it's a little bit more on the basic side of that as well. But it really helps with computational and critical thinking skills beyond just, uh, the, the normal classrooms. That's going to be helpful in any sort of course, not just computer science, no matter what students go into. And the reality is, uh, computers are here, right? It's the future, they gotta know how to use them. You look there, enrollment at UW Madison jumped 783% from '09 to 2017. It became the top undergraduate enrolled major in 2017. The newest data I could find online just the other day was from 2019, so apparently pandemics a mess for them too. But 5% of their graduates in 2019 were computer science majors, and that was the highest many, I think, economics was the next, like, four and a half. And nationwide, not just Madison, enrollment has doubled from 2013 to 2017. So, having a program was absolutely necessary and we got in there kind of right at the end of that point. Be able to get the students the ability to have some preparation before we get into their college work. With that.
Thank you. So I teach the methods course, um, which is, for lack of better words, our introductory course to computer science. And we obviously want to set students up, uh, to develop problem solving skills, which when we met with Brian Osterberg at Brookfield Central, he said, that was like the first thing he said to us was, you know, there's a misconception that, that computer science is just coding. Certainly, there's, there's a part of that that's true, but he's like, it's problem solve. So, uh, in the methods course, we're looking at building some of that problem solving and obviously also getting enough experience with some coding. Take that next step for the AP course. So, uh, unit wise, we break it down like this is a semester long course. So it's nice, actually, we're able to start the semester with a whole fresh group of students, which is really unique and I liked it a lot. So unit one is algorithms and programming, so we just get them used to like, we're solving a problem with, like, with our hands. Like, I wanna, I have like six cards laid out from a deck, I want to get that lowest card to the front or to the left or whatever. How am I gonna make that happen with a certain? Uh, second unit, we're getting into stuff like binary, hexadecimal, um, searching algorithms, sorting algorithms. Again, this is not writing the code for that, but like, how can we make that happen? And then from there, it gets into a little bit more of, I guess, what you would call code scratchers, drag and drop program, which I have Rishil here, he was a student of mine, the first semester, he'll be showing you one of the programs that comes along with Scratch. And then from there, we go into, we use a website called code.org, they have AP curriculums, which we actually pull. There's a second AP course called AP Computer Science Principles. Um, and we actually pull some of our stuff from there, this, the stuff where we're using JavaScript to program. So, uh, units four, five, and six there are getting into some writing code, designing the interface and things like that. And I believe he also has our final project for the method, so. So Rishil, I don't know how well your voice carries, uh, but we'll start by showing you this. So, let's make it a rock, paper, scissors game and just so you can see, you know, what some of this code is looking like. In some of these various areas here. So again, drag and drop, I can just pull stuff from over here and use that to essentially make the program do what I would like it to do, so.
Oh.
Hey. Basically, this is a rock, paper, scissors game, where the human in this case would input, uh, one of three keys, each representing a rock, paper, scissors, and they'll be playing against the computer, which would randomly select either rock, paper, scissors, depending on some number. So for example, if it picked a random number of zero, it could represent it as rock. And, uh, so once the two sides have made their decision, it would use an if else statement to compare the two. So for example, if the computer picked rock and I picked paper, or I picked scissors, the rock would be the scissors, so then it would output. So I'll click J for rock. And the computer has automatically picked paper, which means rock, so. Okay, paper, and it also ran this, I picked paper, so it's a draw.
Yes, so part of the challenge, obviously, well, many challenges, uh, is, you know, wow, how are we handling that with a tie? Because again, you're seeing it's keeping track, computers for players for, um, things that even seem simple. Like when I put this green flag, like stuff just needs to be reset, like things that seem simple and we lose them. You guys are thinking about, well, how's that actually working, um, as people through and do some of this stuff, so. Um, and then we'll get into some of our JavaScript stuff here, and again, we'll show you what the code looks like with this. So the nice thing again about code.org, code.org is that they have a setting where we can go drag and drop, and that's usually how we kind of get their feet wet on this. And then they also have an option that gets this into text. So again, you can see, uh, Rishil here, uh, it's really, really nice work here. So he can play a little bit of all of the app does.
Yes, and basically, this was a project, a final project with semester, and we compiled all of our projects. Thing that demonstrates our achievement. Also, I chose to pick the program that would display the task for these. So let me just show you. So code.org has inbuilt in databases where you can use them, such as this, I use task, but they have manuals, uh, states, geography, all sorts of stuff. So this traverses those databases and it picks a random selected building depending on, uh, I said my number that I had chosen earlier. Also, for example, if I knew, but it's short, it's been building, uh, which is depending on the rank of that. Another thing that this program does is it sorts buildings into different categories. So for example, if you want to find the tallest building in the world, you can select worldwide, and you can select these categories. The tallest building with the number of floors, height or height or open, so this is a number. So they will go through each element in the database and compare the floors to each grid, and it will find the maximum number of floors and you pick that building. It can display image and display a short description about it. That is, you can do it for certain countries too, so, uh, say, the United States, for example. The tallest building in the United States is also one of the most underflooded, it's a, it's a, it's a space that's.
So, and again, we, we use, we use stuff like this every day and it seems very simple, obviously, because very, very smart people.
Uh, as far as the AP curriculum goes, I'm not going to go through every single unit here. If you've done some background with, uh, computer science, some of that stuff will make a little bit more sense. But we start from the very beginning, uh, looking at what a variable and a constant is, going through iteration with loops and if else type statements with conditionals, all the way through object oriented programming, which is the whole basis of Java and what it really can do. And so, in this course, a lot more of it is that like text based coding. So I'm, I'm just going to ask Raymond, who took the course last year, to kind of give a little bit of a description, kind of like, what he's done, what his, uh, his pathways been through computer science, because it won't, it's not something I can quite just put up there more like, hey, see, this is, this is what we had in class, because generally the code will, uh, will come out with like asking inputs and outputs and doesn't quite have from the AP classes standpoint, the same kind of interface look as like some of the, the apps did. We do cover some of that at the end after the AP class, because I think it's really important. And so I'll show you kind of what that looks like after, but, I mean, why don't you, I guess, a little for your, your, uh, your sciences.
So hi, Ron, my name is Raymond Wong. I'm a little nervous today, so I might stumble, so don't cry. So I've always been kind of like interested in computer science as I was a child. Both my parents took, uh, computer science at Marquette for their master's degree, they integrated to America. So I've always had this like fascination with, uh, computer science as well as like, how do we utilize this to solve problems? Because I love, I like solving problems. So I think around age eight, I was like venturing on my own and I discovered Point Academy and these online websites. And I just kind of like went through their, like, three on my course load and just got a little bit more interested. So now closer to what, uh, I took AP CompSci. So I took this course last year as a sophomore, uh, as a freshman. The only way you can get into AP CompSci is to take an exemption test. So I contacted a few people, including Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Polichuk. And I was asking, how can I join the computer science program? Well, they said, if you want to take it next year, then you should probably take the exemption test. So the exemption test is just a little, um, it's basically a little test about like, how well do you know algorithms? How well do you understand what we're trying to do with CompSci? So then I took this, uh, test towards the, I think, spring of my freshman year, I passed, and then I had the opportunity to take this course last year. Now, AP CompSci was a pretty fascinating to me, especially, uh, the homework problem. I know homework is usually not something we should be overjoyed about, but this time homework was actually quite interesting. He had us design these little, uh, challenges and it had us, uh, basically entirely whiteout in the classroom in order to solve these, uh, little problems. That was really interesting. Um, what else? Oh, yeah. Um, additionally, with taking this course, I gained a lot of, uh, computer science knowledge, particularly with, uh, coding in Java. So, um, Mr. Martin asked a couple of people who were interested to compete in some of our computer science competitions in Wisconsin, such as the Marquette one, which is coming up next week. And then, um, I think also the MSOE, which I also competed in. Oh, yeah, I remember, it's competed in twelve. And as a team, we actually did quite well. It was also interesting to actually, uh, try to like think on the spot and, uh, solve these little problems like on demand, which is quite good to go to do. So that was really fun. Now, what am I doing with AP CompSci after taking the course, or sorry, computer science after I'm taking the course? Uh, this summer, I actually was at Purdue University and I was, uh, doing sort of undergrad research on 3D polyhelary geometry using computer science, particularly with, uh, deep learning regression. So that was something really interesting that I did, uh, over the summer. Now, um, next year, through the ECC program, I am taking the data structures course as well as the following course after data structures, which is, uh, which I'm excited. And then, so why computer science? Well, I think that computer science is probably, obviously, the future as technology becomes more and more advanced. So I want to be part of that, like, generation that gets to do things with computer science, to help better, you know, help people and to make our world more efficient and that kind of stuff. So then, yeah, my future goals are just, I try to find an internship at some sort of company to like utilize my computer science knowledge as well as, uh, primarily a major in computer science. So that's a little bit about my.
So he pointed out that, uh, that he enjoys the homework. It's because they call them programming opportunities, they don't know they're homework. As he pointed, he did say that, um, the, the students can get in through taking an exemption test. I mean, some students have a wealth of knowledge coming in, they don't necessarily need the intro semester long course. That, that is the two different paths. They can take the semester long course and then, uh, work into the, the AP course the next year, or they can take the exemption, or not exemption, exam and move right into the AP course from there. Here's kind of just one of the examples of, like I said, after the AP exam, we, we try to get into some of the graphic user interface stuff, which does create some pretty cool stuff. And this is basically a game called TetraVex, where on the right side, they have code out the way to make those 16 tiles, which are split into four groups, they've got a number and a color design. And basically, the goal is to be able to click on each tile, move it over to the left, where at the end, it ends up looking something more like this, where the colors right above and below or left and right all match up. And if that last one had been slid over, the thing would have gone nuts. So I didn't, uh, didn't do that to grab a screenshot this morning, uh, out of there. But the kids have the program up a significant amount, so this is going to be super tiny. But just to show what it's all at, all of that is just part of the code that they have to put together. They're given something that's incomplete and they have to put together how each one of those tiles creates itself, how it shuffles, how it moves itself back together, and they're really implementing all of the work they've used from the semester. Once the AP exam is done, we've got, you know, a month of time left there. It's not just wasted, we go through some work, uh, in things like this. We also look at some of the stuff that would be covered in like data structures course if they move on into, to future courses after that. And to kind of show the immense success that the students have had here, I wish the AP site had been working better, but it's been down the last couple of days, because our students have beat the bananas out of the state and the national averages. And I wanted to put that up here, but then the site didn't want to open. So what I was able to get you is, uh, every single one of our students that's taking the AP exam over the course of the three years has got a three, four, or five on it, which is credit bearing, every single one, 100% every year. National average is 69, 70, 65, or of course, those three years, our kids are at 100%. Speaks to the work that they put in and the effort that they do in preparing and the process that's been built up for this couple of years of, uh, of work. And we've got, uh, a uptick here, 22 kids taking it, uh, coming up this May, so hoping that the numbers keep trending in that direction.
I was curious, how many students are enrolled in the computer science course, not just both AP and D? Methods, the 22 semesters was around 40-ish, so what's my F semester, which is manageable? And then you have, oh, it's the semester 22. Right, so hopefully 50, 60, probably.
We have a significant number of students doing successfully complete the exemption for next year. So we'll see once the semester students, once I actually see what the enrollment looks like from that group for next year, what that puts us at. But that's kind of where we saw like a dip after a year or two, and we're like, oh, we actually have to try for this. And so that's where we, we kind of started to get the brochure together and trying to make sure our, our math teachers is who we really went to. And hey, when you're talking about the next math course, they should take, I should throw a plug in for the computer science class number two.
I was gonna say, going back to, like, there's a real question of why we don't even have this, like, for a long time, and that's where like all this work started from. And it's kind of like, we're still a relatively new program here, so it's still growing and it's still building and kids are still hearing about it and showing interest in it from year to year. So it's kind of slowly growing, but it feels like this is something we should have in our school. Like, kids want it, kids need it, it's a profession that keeps growing, so it's like, we do that. I think it was, it was great to hear the students talk, but I give you guys a lot of credit for remaking yourselves too, because, um, learning something new like that, that's pretty complex, I think that's, that's amazing, so, thanks for.
It was, it was quite a turnaround.
Thank you, very well done. I would just want to add, uh, my commendation to you folks who, uh, Chris, Steve, and Nick, you've done a great job to create a class out of nothing and not even having the necessary background themselves and taking a year or two just to get, get it going. That speaks to an extraordinary amount of the extra effort, and we appreciate it. Thanks, though. And those 100% numbers are, are certainly credits to kids. They're also credits to you folks.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to ask, uh, if ever need someone coming in to help prioritize the need to be part to the pin in the class about the space on the screen industry. And more than that, we use it on a daily basis. The industries locally as well globally that have shortage of those, I mean, the piece, as we think about the, 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 the planes, how we do that in manufacturing or in other areas, that there is, we, you know, I can use your, and my work today. Happy to help with that.
Careful minds, man.
This will help you in the long run, so I, I see that, I probably talk to the class, I mean, I'm sure.
Uh, how many methods courses were, uh, available last week? So we go based on sign up, um, if there's been times where we've run three, leave it to one semester and one another, otherwise it's been great, this is. And as Mr. Schmidt said, the challenge is obviously getting, getting the word out there, making sure that we're, uh, you know, recruiting actively. I think the interest is that, right, right now.
It's, it's interesting, because I just saw something through an email chain like a week or so ago, about like, a, a school that had renamed a, a class and saw a precipitous drop in enrollment. The class isn't any different, it's just no longer says like computer science essentials or computer science programming. And because of the way that it's renamed, it's like, is anyone else seeing this? And so we're almost kind of wondering if CS methods, based on the fact that it doesn't have, we're programming or something in there, is almost attracting that we haven't gotten the word out there yet. So I think that's a big piece, trying to get the word out. As was helped.
So just to wrap up this, this item on the superintendent report, I want to thank these three gentlemen for all of their work and for being here tonight, as well as the students for being here to present. Yeah, Arrowhead teaches way more than the basics, and this is a perfect example. These three gentlemen could have stayed in their math classes, had full-time jobs, teaching the same curriculum as always that they saw a need and what would be best for students, and so they really stepped up and developed a program. And I would venture to say we have that exact same thing happening in every one of our departments here at Arrowhead High School. So I'm really proud of our teachers and I hope they're proud of themselves for doing that, because ultimately, it helps our students. And it's not just helping our students for the next class in their high school career, it's helping students for their future, whatever their future holds, whether that's college or careers or military. And I want to thank the board and the curriculum committee in particular, Anderson Schultz's leadership, for approving classes and programs that sometimes appear a little risky, but it's, it pays off. So thanks, and thanks, guys, for being here, appreciate it. So thanks and thanks guys for being here. Appreciate it. And then the second item on the superintendent's report is to recognize the long-term service of three of our board members that are exiting the school board. Unfortunately, Donna Behringer could not be here tonight. And I will thank her on behalf of the rest of the school board and the community for her twelve years of service. Uh, Sue Schultz has served on the Arrowhead Board for fifteen years, or twenty-one years, I'm sorry, Kent is fifteen. Twenty-one years on the Arrowhead Board and twenty-eight on the Northlake Board at the same time. So it's a huge time commitment. And Kent for nineteen years here. And also on the Richmond Board. As board members know, it's it's not just one meeting. There is a lot to do, a lot to read, there are committee meetings. So your dedicated service to Arrowhead, our community, and ultimately our students is really highly appreciated and valued. And to that end, we have a couple little thank you gifts. So a certificate and recognition of your service. Now just read the print. Arrowhead, yeah, Arrowhead High School is fortunate to be a team of many hardworking and caring staff members and school board members. Through your dedication to our students and school, you have exemplified what makes Arrowhead so special. Representing the Board of Education, I would like to recognize your time, efforts, and contributions while serving on the Arrowhead Board of Education.
Thank you.
And also from the school board and the district. Tribute as a day that has duties in it. So when you find yourselves with free nights on Wednesdays, you can have a date night, you can go out to eat, you can go to the movies. And enjoy your your added free time. And there are some cards in there from staff members.
Thank you, Mark. It's definitely been a pleasure to help these past, you know, twelve years on this step. Enjoy and it's very worthwhile. And experience I'll cherish for this in my life.
You've impacted thousands of students over the years. Stand up for Mr. Schmitz.
All right, at this point, we're going up for a communication comments from the public. We have three people signed up to speak to the board. I just want to set the ground rules that we have established for comments from the public. And we're wishing wishing to speak to board must uh the president register on the sign up form, which we have here. A three minute limit is enforced uh for each person. Public comment is only accepted during the agenda item. During this agenda, sharing minutes with another uh person is not allowed. Speaker should address the board as a whole, not individual board members. And should remain polite and respectful. Only board present may respond to comments or questions. He or she has the authority to ask another board member, board administrator to respond. Board members uh will not respond to public comments unless designated by uh board president. Board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item. When the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments or questions that were raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and or take action. There will be no sense of communication during the time of the agenda topic. Okay, with that, uh, tie court.
Oh, good evening. Thank you very much. I don't know if you had a timeline here, so I'm not to add. So I don't know if I go along with a little on the two just off here, but thank you for having me here tonight. I spoke here before and we appreciate this is a very momentous occasion, to say the least, I would say. And uh, maybe I speak on behalf of some of the parents, myself included, that saw a change come April fifth, right? And without the concerted efforts of the Republican Party of Waukesha County, I wouldn't have it been indicated on who I was going to vote for in my village when I recall. Some of the other parents that uh made a concerted effort to come out here and support their children to make a change for what they feel is right. We know that we've suffered and I have suffered from the absolutes, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm a Christian here, but I'm trying my best to ensure that I don't want to be bad these last two years, but uh an absolute hellhole they call St. Louis for my daughter. For these last two years, it had been nothing but short of nonsense. We know that the COVID issue has affected and impacted some people's lives. We know that. So does the flu every year. But this nonsense has really destroyed a lot of families, a lot of jobs. It's really brought to forefront of who are Board of Education, some of them. How they vote and what they actually feel, what they think is best for our children. And it's unfortunate that when you do follow the money trail and some of this stuff that you, some of you know, to be true, is that it gets a little nefarious. And what I did on my side was I did follow the money. It's kind of interesting that the mitigation standards that were laid down with an iron fist in my daughter's school uh would not uh were followed to a T. And they had to be, but they didn't get their money. Right? They didn't get their Ursa money. They didn't get their COVID relief money. Um, and it wasn't for the children. As we know that these children have a ninety-nine point nine nine eight seven five percent survival ability rate, right? And it seemed like the sky was falling on some of these children and the adults for that matter as well. You know, our children had more of a chance to get a uh a sugar laden uh vending machine fall on top of them here at school, right? During a solar eclipse, right? The unicorn. Then to have death from COVID. But no, we had to shut everything down and then we had to make it look like virtue signaling with the masks. It was unfortunate that I just went down this Saturday uh to surprise my daughter, her largest um track meet uh of her life and her senior career. Thank God she's only got a month and two weeks left that totalitarian regime down there that I can't get through. But I saw her come down that hill and I could see it in her mouth, through her eyes, and she was happy their dad came down and surprised her to make a trip to seven hour, it comes here, a very important time. But I had this gut feeling and I really got sick to my stomach because she'd come trundling down that hill on a beautiful blue sky day last Saturday with that damn mask on. Outside and I, she comes running down the hill. I got so upset, you know, she could see my eyes and I tried um insatiably to try to swing the Board of Education down there on facts and figures and data.
How did you wrap this up here?
I will, but um, if it fell into no avail. So you can kind of see where this has happened in some of these public school systems. And I'm so glad that the parents here took the time to really come out and vote, to vote what's right. I've lost the battle down there. I didn't lose the war necessarily. But one thing that I do have to do before I leave this place is to welcome each and every one of you, congratulate all of you that are leaving. Um, and ask that one thing I have to get the gospel out, you know, I have to do that because I'm born again believer in Jesus Christ. I would ask each and every one of you that are coming on here. And it is my goal, uh, some others might not hold this uh, you know, belief system, but it's the facts. You can't, you can't deny the truth of what the Word of God says. And I pray for each and every one of you. And I ask that you go and you really ask the board for direction on how you do uh your decisions or you make decisions for the children. For the little children that are going to be coming up that will be leaders one of these days. But always put God first. See King first as the king of the heaven and all these things will be added up to you. And that means all, not some, not a little bit, not what you think is right. Read the Word of God, go to go again for guidance for these children. Because at the heart, that's what it is all about. Greatest commandment of these is to love each other, especially the children. And when Christ said in Matthew, he said, if you don't do this, children, if you do something to the least of these children, it'd be better for you to have a millstone around you that can be cast in the sea. Those are harsh words. That's a fact.
Try and wrap it up, please.
I appreciate it. And yeah, I appreciate one last thing here before I go. And this, you have to forgive me, I'm kind of a dry comic. I don't know, but I wanted to recite something from a uh little lyrical line that I found in a song from nineteen sixty-nine from a band called Steam. And that lyric goes, na na, na na, na na, na na. Hey, 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 goodbye.
Thank you.
Ken Norcross. I wanted to save these comments for the more formal uh portion. Um, so thank you for making the time. Again, give me the the signal when I've got some time coming up. Um, I recognize that we've got viewers at home. So thank you to my listeners and watchers on the interwebs. Um, as we're entering a transition phase for this board and our school, I want to thank the outgoing members for the service to the students and the community. This is eighty-person years of experience we're about to lose. Um, I want to thank you for listening to students and parents, particularly as we've navigated uh two very difficult years. A great deal of institutional knowledge, as I said, um, is uh is has been developed through your service and I hope we can find ways of retaining some shape or fashion. So thank you. Um, my comments today are intended as remarks on the negative turn that school board races seem to have taken. And I've got a few points I'd like to make around that. First of all, the insertion of partisan politics into local school board races by WISRed and Republican Party of Waukesha County has not benefited in our communities and in fact has done great harm. Um, this election pitted conservatives against other conservatives with one side receiving substantial support from the Republican Party, four thousand dollars, two hundred and nine, that's four thousand two hundred and nine dollars and ten cents by my count, postage and delivery not included. Um, it somehow involved photo ops with a gubernatorial candidate, Rebecca Playfish, and her campaign injecting support to candidates across the county. Um, there was a slate of candidates apparently vagued and selected by a secret opaque process involving, again, the Republican Party of Waukesha County, WISRed, and an activist group, Parents for Education, Arrowhead, or We the Parents, Arrowhead. I can never remember which one it's, which name applies. Um, this was not an example of transparency in action. We lacked a candidate forum in order to, for our community to learn what candidates had to offer in this district. Um, that's something I hope is remediated uh in the future. Perhaps a JSA can play a role in that. Um, the most disturbing thing, however, is uh we saw occurred on March thirty-first. Uh, when a far-right group, and I spoke about this group, No Left Turn in Education, um, hosted an event featuring a speaker from the John Birch Society, number four, but I'd have to say that society was active here, but it turns out it is. A self-proclaimed expert in CRT who rolled into Heartland to provide two and a half hours of brightly propaganda. Uh, which as far as I've been able to tell, and I have looked at the video, uh, did not operate anything in the way of the definition, CRT in a hundred and fifty minutes of ovation. Uh, the event was advertised as a means of meeting members of the Arrowhead School Board. That speaker's views should not inform policy or decision-making in any school district they are abhorrent. And any commingling of the Arrowhead brand without a No Left Turn in Education, John Birch Society certainly, and the speaker uh will only damage our reputation. So there's not a lot of good news on the partisan turn for local government. Still, I commit to working with the board and our school and our community to try and improve the situation and get to work on the issues. Um, we should be focusing also just the the talent, traction, and retention, development of our educators, sustainable funding, um, addressing bullying and harassment, um, building a more, a more inclusive environment here. Um, and fixing, as I continue to say, the policy on non-discrimination policy, free, free, free. Um, again, sincere thanks to the board members who have invested so much time and energy uh into our kids and our educators and staff and the public asset we call Arrowhead. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's fair deal.
Thank you for your audience. I appreciate your service.
Are you done?
You have a clock, John?
John, he's the one that's.
Hey, I've got some dice. It's calling problems here, right? I'm just saying, I'm on a clock.
What? Excuse me?
I'm on a clock.
You would? Okay, I'll make it to where it's. God, I can't, I can't believe it. I I'm talking about a stuffle that's going down behind me and you say I'm on the clock, but you you don't change. And and many have tried to help you change and others to change. To see that it's not just a a minor group that's upset. And I know you don't care anymore. I know you've sent emails and all kinds of things. And honestly, you probably think I'm just standing in front of you just to make a seat or something like that. Um, it actually worked out perfectly. There's a, there's a stuffle going down behind you. And I'm saying, Mr. President, here it is. I'm showing you. And you say you're on the clock. So um I'll request that the board gives me an extra thirty seconds, which they can put up to a vote or go for it, but that's going to be up to you guys because I do understand how the rules work. And I understand that the president doesn't just run everything, whether it's.
They need to know the limit to a final, like you do about the same amount of time. So you just keep on going.
Uh, sir, can you repeat that? I did not hear it.
I said they were over time and I'll allow you the same person.
Understood. Thank you. I I'm appreciative of people that serve. I'm not appreciative of having a logo of a tradition of excellence and and choosing to steamroll someone. This movement started accidentally, I think, with masks. And all of a sudden, it turned into someone that was a qualified elector saying, I want to be on the board. And nine votes were taken to keep that person from being seated. We're in the middle of Passion Week. Jesus Christ, and I'm not trying to turn it, I'll just say a man from the past in the the bestselling book in history did get upset because people did things wrong, claiming they were doing things that were right and went in overturned tables. Because he was upset at what they did in the temple. He's upset that they turned it into selling pigeons, making money and that kind of thing. And and there is a board member that came out of this that was a golden miracle. And it 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 all worked out just fine. I think you need to have, you need to have faith in that. As elected officials and even as human beings. When a group of people, whether it's two or three, says something, it might just be a rumor. When ten or twelve says something. Yeah, I'll take into consideration. When fifty show up and are like, we are really mad. Can you please talk to us? The elected officials that are going to continue being elected officials, or for those of you that might even this board member are on their mark. When the people stand in front of you and they're upset and you can see it, when they say this optics that you're putting out now, I'm telling you, do the right thing. And then we don't. When we change deadlines, when we do all of that in darkness. I agree with the gentleman that spoke before me on two points. Harassment and bullying. At least ask. Are you so mad? What are we doing wrong? Can we find a way to work together? It was never asked. And I'm going to tell you, I do commend time and service on the board. But we've got a lot of people in history that have done really bad things and done it for a long time. To put out some of the comments that were put out before the election, that's one thing that's politics.
If you have to go to the point of the other speaker, we could do wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let's not be politicians. Because that's just about politics, the state and office. Let's be elected officials. Let's care about what we say we care about. Let's not be so scared of someone that we may not know about or don't agree with. Let's ask the questions. What do you stand for? What are you about? Why are you so angry, parents? Why are all of you constantly coming to these meetings? What's going on? It turned out it wasn't just a small group of people that are just coming to rattle rows at meetings. And I understand this is going to hurt the ego right now. But the greatest thing that people can can do for themselves is I've made mistakes, is admitting when they make mistakes. Jesus Christ died on the cross because people wanted to keep power and couldn't admit that they were willing to give that up. Because that time had come, that second coming had come. As elected officials, let's ask, why are you angry or why are you happy? Let's talk to the constituents. Let's talk to the people. Let's not just look at them and when we're in a meeting for one or two hours every couple of weeks. Say, this is just a group. Don't worry about it. Because there's a lot of staff that has to deal with the blowback of people that get to sit here for two hours. That staff is here sixty hours a week grinding. And they're the ones that need. And they're the ones that need to deal with it because this board's going to change, but the superintendent doesn't. The teachers don't. They all have to deal with it and the children don't.
Okay, John, thank you. I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
Keep that in mind. Because what we saw here was that people were angry and they voted.
Okay, under the committee reports.
We have a meeting coming up.
We have a meeting coming up.
Thank you. Finance, let's play some.
Similarly, we don't have anything on the agenda right now. We ordered on our previous meeting, that last, previous plan meeting on our last board meeting. Nothing has happened since then. Our next meeting date is April twenty seventh. At seven AM.
Thank you. Okay, building grounds. Meeting on April sixth, where we went through some of the expenses coming up, some of the items that are on our list of things that need to be done. Any more items on the agenda or on the list of items that need to be addressed than there is unfortunately, money in the coffers to address. We also took a tour of the swimming pool and the, you know, workings of the pool. Probably paramount of that was the electrical systems are in air conditions. We have freight wires, we have water that's going through electrical panels, which are at this point considered to be dangerous. Which will be replaced very quickly here. And nutshell, that's pretty much it. There's a lot to be done from a building ground standpoint, a lot more that a lot more than needs to be done than there is finance available to make it happen. And of course, the number one priority items keep growing. We ceased having item two, of course, on the priority list because we just have too many on priority one list that can we can't. Next meeting is May fourth at seven AM. Personnel.
On March fourteenth, we had a closed session, the essence of which is described in our April sixth minutes. Where the personnel committee met with United Teachers Association, our union, to exchange proposals. We've been advised by that the CPI increase over the preceding year is measured from dates some time ago was four point seven percent. Proposed a increase of base wages at four point seven percent, but that is blended with those components of compensation that are not base wages and are not benefits, so actual cash compensation. The proposal wound up at a blended rate of two point eight percent increase. So our teachers, again, this year will receive a increase in wages that they have expressed some satisfaction for, and yet it is below the rate of inflation. Many of us are experiencing. That proposal has been reflected in three contracts that are being presented for action before the board tonight. Those contracts pertain to our three types of employees. The first, the first contract will be the teacher's contract. And then I apologize, my agenda is looking a little. So the teacher's contract is the first of the three, the second of the three is a support staff contract requiring the exact same two point eight percent increase. And the third is our administrative and confidential staff compensation proposal. Questions raised tonight, whether it was the contract that was confidential and is not a public document that all three are, staff and so are described as confidential staff. Directly for the superintendent. Or Kent, I'm not exactly sure how to bring this before the board because I'm not sure I understand two A.
Sure. The, the teacher compensation is actually divided into two parts because the union and the board by law can only bargain on the total base wage. So item A, discussion and action item A, is just for that base wage portion. And then item number three is discussion and action on the total teaching staff compensation, which includes the supplemental portions that are the steps and lanes within our salary schedule. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so that's.
So it's actually four things to.
I'm glad it went through the process then. Explaining that the four point seven percent base wage is just a component of the cash compensation. Contract replaces the two point eight percent raise, which is the actual. Mr. President.
You can make a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the proposal set forth, the item two A of the personnel agenda.
Okay, the movement secondary discussion, and I would like to interject something here. I'd like to ask you. Now you're up the two point eight percent. It's actually four point, four point seven percent. The CPI, that's on the base base salary level, which was spread over the, correct if I'm wrong, was spread over the the salary schedule, actually comes up to two point eight, seven five percent or something. Per two point seven ninety, point two, one percent on the individual cells.
So teacher, our teachers are at various places within the salary schedule. In order to calculate the base wage, we move everyone to the base wage of their particular degree. So the vast majority of our teachers go to the very base, the smallest wage cell. And then we have a few that require a master's degree and those go to the lowest master's degree cell as their base wage. We multiply the FTE by those base dollar amounts to get a total base wages. And then we increase that total dollar amount by four point seven percent and it generates a dollar value. It was about two hundred and fifty two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. That was spread. That was spread across the schedule evenly and that came up with it to a two point seven eight two one percent increase per cell. So the, the board, through the meeting confer portion and supplemental pay, increased that to an exact of two point eight percent per cell, plus allowed step movement and rate movement for teachers going on next year. So that's how the acquisition set.
So I have a motion on floor to approve the group in Arrowhead Teachers and Arrowhead High School. Any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye. Oh, carry it. Thank you.
And if I could just interject for a moment, our teacher union also has their membership vote. And that vote happened yesterday and they did pass the ratification of that as well. So both parties have agreed and.
That's not always the case. Sometimes we approve it first, then the union approves it. Sometimes the union approves it first and we approve it. Doesn't matter. It's just formality. Okay, item three, discussion action on the twenty twenty three teaching staff compensation proposal.
So this is the element of the contract that takes base wages and adds supplemental pay, which is where the steps and lanes and the system give credit for additional masters work and for years of service. It's also the portion that shows the blended rate that we ultimately are giving the teachers in total. That being two point eight percent, I would move that we adopt that proposal.
Okay, the movement second to adopt the teaching staff compensation, all the way to the discussion. Not all of the favor say aye.
All right.
Thank you. And important.
Item four is our contract for our support staff. And reflects the same two point eight percent increase for the coming year and I would move we adopt that. Proposal was presented.
I'll second it. Anyway, I'm moving second to adopt the support staff compensation for twenty two, twenty three, any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye. Both carry it. Thank you. And last item.
The last item is our compensation package for administration and confidential staff. And like all of our other employees, they're receiving it. Suppose that they would receive two point eight percent increase on the coming school.
Hey, moving second to approve the twenty two, twenty three administrative confidential staff compensation for all way for the discussion. Not all of the favor say aye.
All right.
Oh, carry it. Thank you.
Nothing further, personnel.
Hey, policy chairperson, Berenger. I'm going to hear right about now. Well, it was a meeting on March tenth. And we reviewed policy one fifty one point five, regular board meeting agenda format, and we have a motion to amend that. As well as the else have a proposal to amend six twenty one on exchange students, which was primarily just a couple minor verbiage changes. So the next meeting is May fourth at six thirty PM.
Yes, that's the session with Attorney Bob Butler that will help review series one hundred and two hundred. So the attorney will be present for that and then we'll determine a second policy meeting date sometime in May to do the three hundred through one thousand series policies for the annual review.
Okay, policy. Policy six, policy one fifty one. One thing is changing is right now we have future agenda item as the last item on the agenda, the proposal approved by the purpose of the policy committee to ins, to have I'm sorry, the last item was to, or close session appropriate that needed to be. And proposed to change that to insert future agenda items above that so that following that could be a close session. Be necessary. That is the, we have a motion to approve that. So move second. Okay, we move second to approve policy one fifty one point five, regular board meeting agenda. Any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye.
All right.
Oh, carry it. Discussion and action to approve revised policy six twenty one, which has to do with exchange student. Exchange student policy. Only difference is that policy now states that the will be done and approved by the superintendent. That's been changed to principal. And the board gives the superintendent the change to the principal discretion to extend the stated deadlines when there's extenuating circumstances. So. What you.
Like every other principal in the state.
Motion to approve the policy change for six twenty one. Okay, moving second to change, approve policy six twenty one, exchange students, any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye. Oh, carry it. Next meeting date is specified earlier, is May fourth at six thirty PM. That will be with the new board members. Okay, WSB. Don't have a lot without WSB, but the twenty twenty two new school board member gatherings will be taking place at the various, reach of the various WSB regional settings. We belong to WSB region fifteen. And that will be taking place at Puyottie High School on April nineteenth from seven to seven to nine PM or seven to nine thirty somewhere in that neighborhood. So I hope that all the new board members can certainly make that worthwhile. Help learn what's going on with services available through the WSB to assist board members, et cetera, and what they do for the school. The net, that's all I got on that. All right, CISA one.
This is just an informational item at this point for the board. CISA one holds their annual convention in May seventeenth. And our school board would need to identify a delegate. So I put all of the materials there for your reading enjoyment. And then if anyone is interested in volunteering or if multiple people or members are interested in volunteering to be the CISA representative, in particular for that delegate responsibility at their annual meeting on May seventeenth, you can volunteer for that next board meeting because sometime between May first and May fifteenth is when we are to elect a delegate for our school board. And then I report that back to CISA one. So if you read those materials and have any questions for me, just let me know. Otherwise, that actually will be in discussion and action item on May agenda.
Laura, would you mind just kind of elaborating a little bit on the function of CISA?
Sure, CISA is, it's an acronym for Collaborative Educational Services Agency. There are eleven or twelve Cisas across the state of Wisconsin. We are CISA one. We, our CISA represents forty five school districts and actually over three hundred students. So CISA one represents a third of the students in the whole state as compared to the other Cisas that are significantly smaller. Arrowhead uses programs through CISA frequently for professional development resources. They offer educational programs, some alternative ed programs for students. They, monthly, there is a meeting for all CISA superintendents. So for instance, this is called PAC. This year I'm the chairperson of CISA one superintendence. Next year will be someone else. Lots of collaboration and partnership. There are monthly meetings for special ed directors. There are monthly meetings for curriculum directors. It's really a nice networking opportunity. CISA one is funded through, it's not any kind of tax money. They have to raise all their own funds. They partner a lot with the DPI to share information out across the state. Say that's the the key roles of, of CISA. They have a board of directors of eleven people and an executive director. There are eleven board members each come from one of the forty five or eleven of forty five school districts in the state. So for instance, a long time board member, El Zippo, who passed away and couldn't fulfill his responsibility here on our board nor the CISA board, he had sat on that CISA board for a long time and then Sue Schultz took his position on that board. And right now for our region, there's a school board member from the North Lake School District that's serving on our board. So right now there isn't a seat on the board for monthly meetings for CISA one. But every school district is allowed to have a delegate at their annual meeting that can help shape goals of the future. Thank you.
New business, supporting transactions. We do have two resignations. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Move to accept those resignations.
Okay, moving second to approve the resignations. Further discussion? All of the favor say aye.
All right.
Both carry it. And contract. And contract, we have contract. Earlier for, I guess, for. Girls off oil, all and. Boys call assistant coaches, we have a motion to approve those. Hey, we're moving saying to approve the contracts and through the discussion. All favor say hi.
Hi.
I both carry it, thank you. And we have a donation. We have a donation from David Barney for the, donate to the teacher's family, consumer education, or twice for world of. Twice. World of children, of course, we have a motion to approve that.
Second.
Hey, the rule is saying to prove the donation, make through the discussion. Not all of them favor say hi.
Alright, alright.
Carry it, thank you. Any future agenda items?
I am gonna stick that the. Policy meeting scheduled for May fourth, that we include in that agenda, a revision of the description of the vice president's stance. I'm not sure how far I should get into that, but then we can, you know.
I have planned that, yeah. Sounds good, and I can have some odds, well, Bob Butler will be there, but I'll have his materials to be provided also as a reference.
Maybe we can look into the newer members, if they would like copies of our policy manuals.
Yep, we have that, yes.
I'd also like to propose that we get a copy of Laura's contract for all new members and ourselves too, since. Policy and supervision are what we. The board functions as, I think it's just good to have a paper copy, because I find looking at everything online is.
Any other future items that somebody would like to bring up? If not, I asked Laura to add another item on the agenda for this month, for final thoughts by board members. And with that, I'm gonna cut that out, I have a, I have a note from Donna Berenger who. Is not able to be here this evening, she's on her way back on vacation. But she says, first of all, I would like to thank the administration for the leadership, collaboration between them is probably the envy of most schools. The passion to make A H S successful is amazing, we may change it seven years ago, and the dedication is one of the reasons why I was proud to be a board member. Additional hours that they spent over the last two years to keep our doors open above and beyond our expectations. I'd also like to thank teachers, custodial, and support staff, positive attitude that they have is so important. The COVID years tested their limits, we always talked about the mental health of students. But we should be aware of their struggles as well, we attract the best staff, engage you so many students, and we are so proud of all of them. I will miss serving on the board because we always focus on the positive outcomes, although we had a difference of opinion, we were a turn, we were a team and came to conclusions that benefit everyone as much as possible. I also miss the relationships I've built with the employees of Arrowhead. I am proud to know how special they are, I will miss the success stories to make the school one of the best in the nation. So anybody else have anything they would like to say?
I have a final statement that I want to share.
Okay.
Thank you. So this statement is for myself only, so if you are so inclined to receive it, please follow your heads. Dear wonderful Lord Jesus, I ask you to bless Kent Rice, Sue Schultz, and Donna Berenger, as they move forward in their lives. Whatever you have intended for each of them, we ask you to be the center of it and to guide their thoughts with your wisdom, love, and righteousness. We also ask you to bless this school, the grounds it sits on, the people who run it, the teachers that teach in it, and the children who attend it. We ask you to send down angels to protect all who enter these grounds, and we ask you to fill them to overflowing with your love. So that all who enter here see each other with your eyes rather than with their own, we pray for this in your holy name, Jesus. Amen.
First. Anybody else?
I would just, and I didn't write anything. But, it's just a huge thank you to staff people that I have been told to, but all the staff, this school. Is such a blessing. Just the people that I've come to. Work with and be a part of, listen to them at meetings. It's been such a treat. And. Just having had my children one year a lot time ago, but just watching more and more kids go through this place, but it's so special. I worked under three administrators. We'll go back to Dave Lotus, one time. Great Justin and now Laura. All special people. It was fun for me to reminisce about Bob Haydig and Jack Goodmal, some of those names that. Were icons here, now also that I was neighbors with and friends of this board member. All the people on a board are very special, because when you're on this board, you're on the best board there is. This is a special place. And I enjoy. Every moment of it, all these years, and I just thank you all, staff wise, please extend that feeling, but. You on the board. Laura, you're incredible. And. I will miss this, but it has been a great brand, and I think. Um, I didn't mean to say, but Jeff, you're, I missed you, but I hold a low responsibility for getting you. You're gonna miss this cheerleader, you know, Silver Park, I started being a silver, really a long, long time ago, but. Thank you, thank you to all of you. It's been a great time, and I love this place, this is. A really special, special school. And we know we're number one. And so I hope to still be a little part, because it's in my heart, and it's been in my heart a long time, so thank you all, I appreciate it, thank you.
Can you still supervise at football games?
Yeah.
Even this huge section would die.
Well, I'll take his money too, because I do that.
I got Matsuya, I've lost the duck, I just made with Laura when you said you weren't gonna cry, well, maybe.
I tried that too, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Can't say your words.
Yes.
Um, for you first. Kent, you've been a good friend for many years. Uh. When. The activities of the last nine months of the boardroom and the others. Became very intense, you became a focus of a lot of that even tonight, and that's sad. I don't think everybody is aware of the hours that you put in. Uh, in particular, aside from the stuff that happened to the boardroom. The buildings and grounds committee was well guided by you for many, many years, and you brought the professionals' expertise to the table, and that expertise. Was essentially given to Arrowhead High School on a month by month basis, so that when our administrative staff came to the table with proposals. They had an expert looking at it on behalf of the board, that made us smarter than that, and that's true for many, many. So I had mentioned. I had mentioned you, but. You fulfilled a really special role, or. It's easy for me, with my profession and background, to. Picket things and look for weaknesses and proposals, so I decide whether or not it's something that I like, but you're a consistent supporter of our staff, our teachers, our administration. And Arrowhead High School, and that is a super important. You mentioning. You acting as a cheerleader on the day that Jeff was persuaded to join us. I think, I think that. That has resonated with a lot of you, and when the people look at this board and ask, do they have the best interest of the kids at heart, I think they hear your voice and the kind of things that you have to say. Donna was a good friend of mine, I've known her for many, many years, and she entered the board just before I did, and she embraced the. Thankless job of policy. And she took the mocking from Sue.
I can't imagine why anybody would.
Policy is the best committee, let's set that aside.
Critical.
Donna did an excellent job, she was studious and she worked very, very hard. Making sure that our policy book was updated, that. All the errors and new changes in culture were reflected in the, in the book, and it is a thankless job, Sue, and.
No.
And I performed very, very well.
I'm so glad you were there.
I just. I haven't, I will redonate this to you privately, but I also want to say. A board is made up of many voices, and it only works if we have different perspectives from one another, and each of these three people brought a perspective that made us a better board.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, obviously, the newest on the board, and I, I can full well appreciate that I came here last September. Around some level of contention, and I. I understand. That that process, well, a lot of people, probably on both sides. Nonetheless. Since coming on board. I have not only gained friendship. With Kent and Donna and Sue. But I gained a great deal of respect. These people cannot sit on a board for as long as they have. I do not, as Tim so aptly said. Have great insight and perspectives that are valuable as part of the team. They will be sorely missed. I can tell you from a building and grounds perspective. When I walked around with Kent. He knows every light bulb of this place, he knows every blade of brass on the grounds. And he knows that because he cared about. And it's evident, so these people will be missed. And. From my perspective moving forward. If we might be able to. Encourage. The ongoing advice and wisdom. From the three departing board members. To continue to advise our board, which is going to be a very young, very new board. But if we could encourage their active support and advice, we will take. And I thank you all three.
Thank you, Kim.
You can. Yes. So yeah, I just want to say, pretty much echoing everyone's comments here, but yeah, thank you for everything you guys thought, because. For me, with my family, we were living in, you know, Milwaukee County, we moved out to Oconomos, like, oh, well, all the schools are great out here, well, we found out quickly, Ocon was like, okay. Let's look around somewhere. But, and with a family of four, you know, we, my wife and I really investigated of who's, who's the best one, which is the best school district for us to go to. And we searched it all out, and Arrowhead was the one, and it was because of, you know. The more, the values that the board had, you know, that still into the school, making it the best it was. So thank you for all your guys' service on behalf of, you know, persuading my family to join Arrowhead, so. Thank you, and yes, it is with the board, there is a lot of work, you know, in here, it's not just a, you know, show up for a two-hour meeting. Or four-hour meeting, later on, it is, you know, you know, going through those committee meetings, and then also just, you know, all that extra stuff, so thank you for your guys' service.
I'd like to thank the staff, faculty, and administration. Those important, encouraged, encouraged with, they showed me during my. Tenure on the Arrowhead School Board. Our motto was one team. I believe we've all worked together. For that goal being. Especially one thing, my fellow board members, Sue Schultz. Donna Berenger for the commitment to the students and community comprises Arrowhead High School. Well done, you've always had your students' best interest at heart. The past two years have been challenging for everyone in every part of our lives. Hopefully starting some sense of normalcy back in our everyday living. Our students, unlike most. Were in school and safe during the entire twenty twenty-one school year, our faculty, staff, and administration are to be commended for that. To the incoming board members. I would strongly recommend you begin attending W S B regional meetings. It's a tremendous resource, make a page of it. I wish new board members all the best. Keep in mind that you're assuming the reins of one of the best school districts. In the state and the nation. Please be good stewards. Thank you. If you'd like to say something, please. Thank you, I appreciate what you guys say, it's very meaningful. First, I want to again recognize and thank Kent and Sue and Donna for the many years of faithful service. To Arrowhead High School and to our community. With their departure also goes an immense amount of institutional knowledge, perspective, depth of understanding. And relationships with staff, which is the glue that holds an organization going, Arrowhead will issue. This past year has been a contentious one, clearly there are among us, there are differing viewpoints. And perspectives, that's okay. I hope we can learn from one another and respect those different opinions and the people who hold them. I believe that some of our differences have been unnecessarily stemming from misunderstandings due to reliance on varying sources. Of information or perhaps lack of information. This can be overcome through diligently seeking reliable information. And understanding. But with the, with the new board. The contention must cease. It must cease for the good of the board that is responsible for governing this school. It must cease so that the administration and teaching staff can focus on their task of educating kids without distraction. And finally, and most importantly, it must cease for the sake of our kids, so that they can focus on obtaining the best education possible. To that end, I commit to work together in a spirit of goodwill. With newly added common board members. Remembering always that what we do is for the benefit of the young people of our community. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Tell me.
I'll second. All of them favor say hi.
Hi.
Alright, thank you.